There we are.
All right. Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-four regular town council meeting. Time is approximately, uh, six, uh, ten P. M. Meeting officially called to order. Town clerk, call please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Einstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
If everyone could rise. Chief Habello, can you please lead us in the pledge, please? Look at the flag and repeat up to me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody, everyone's families here today. Also want to welcome Aventura Commissioner, uh, Michael Sur. Welcome. First on the agenda is proclamations and, uh, some recognition of officers. And the first is a proclamation. And, uh, Michael, you could come up here because this is because of you. And, uh, I want to congratulate you on doing this. And, uh, this is a proclamation from the town of Golden Beach, where, uh, uh, co- uh, colon rectal cancer is second leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among women and men, uh, combined. And whereas cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening, but one in three eligible Americans are not up to date in their screening. And whereas the cancer is estimated to be the number one killer for those ages between twenty and, uh, nineteen by two thousand and thirty, and where Afro-Americans are twenty percent more likely to be diagnosed from the disease than any other groups. And where this cancer is expected to account for eleven percent of all cancer deaths among Hispanic men and nine percent of cancer deaths for Hispanic women. And where this cancer is established by a National Colon Rectal Cancer, uh, Roundtable, is to strive and increase timely cancer screening rates to eighty percent in every community for Americans eligible for screening. And whereas the Observation of Colon Rectal Cancer Awareness Month during the month of March, would be provided a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education and importance for early detection and screening of colon rectal cancer. Now therefore it be resolved that may, uh, that the mayor and the town council and town of Golden Beach do hereby proclaim March twenty-fourth as Colon Rectal Cancer Awareness Month. And it's, uh, today's date is February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. So proclamation from the town of Golden Beach. And I want to thank you. Let me say two words.
On the stage for colon rectum cancer, I'm a state.
You're, uh, sorry.
TV on, wait, I'm sorry.
On the stage for colon rectum cancer survival. And I'm doing this because I didn't know that colonoscopy. Say what? I'm scared. But I had to colonoscopy when I should have. I wasn't standing today. So I feel obligated to let everyone know that colonoscopy. Colon cancer is preventable and it's treatable. So scared to gain awareness. And I really appreciate you doing this as a sister city and my family friend. So thank you very much, officer.
Thank you for coming.
As long as, as long as Ken's on it.
We usually Photoshop Ken.
Oh, good. Can I raise a proclamation?
Yes.
Commissioner, you're going to Washington, D. C.
I'm going next week, yes.
Michael's been a commissioner before he was a commissioner. He was a commissioner of baseball when he was held.
I was twenty-two.
He was a great guy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Dedicated a lot of time to the community. And, and good luck.
Okay, this evening, we've got, uh, a few life-saving awards, which I'm very excited about.
Hey, Mike, do you want to get that from a set before you leave?
Sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Uh, first of all, I am pleased to have Officer Lay, uh, Rivacova and Officer Steven Gonzalez. If you could stand up and come to the front of the chambers would be great. On January sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at two A. M., Golden Beach received an urgent call for help from the Sunny Isles Police Department regarding a woman attempting to commit suicide by jumping into the intercoastal waterways in an attempt to drown herself. Her husband tried to locate her in the dark waters, but was unsuccessful. When Officer, uh, Rivacova and Officer Gonzalez arrived at the scene on the marine patrol vessel, they attempted to rescue her, but she refused to accept their help and continually submerged herself multiple times. Both officers, uh, steered the vessel while entered the water to retrieve her and save their life. It is essential to thank these amazing officers who put their lives on the line to save another and maintain the safety of the community and its residents. Thank you for heroic efforts and congratulations on receiving this life-saving award. Steven Gonzalez, first. Congratulations.
Well done.
Mayor, if I could just, for the family and the audience.
Esta noche, esta noche, la gente está reconociendo, reconociendo, uh, un acto de valor que pasó aquí en la ciudad de Sunny Isles, misterica, la ciudad de Golden Beach. Había una noche donde una señora se estaba tratando de matar. Y lo que pasó, el esposo llamó a la policía para ver si es posible que la policía pudiera responder y da la asistencia. Cuando, cuando Ley y Steve llegaron, la señora intentó otra vez tratar de, de hogarse y no quería la asistencia de la policía. Y ese momento fue cuando los policías de Golden Beach entraron al agua y por donde rescató a la muchacha y salvó la vida de ella. No es todos los días que nosotros podemos reconocer el valor de, de una persona y atentar de ayudarle a una persona cuando está en crisis, porque eso es un acto de crisis. Y, y la oportunidad de Golden Beach poder asistir y salvar esa vida por los actos de estos dos oficiales es algo que estamos muy orgullosos y que ustedes deben estar muy orgullosos por lo que hicieron. Eh, selfish, self, uh, self. Una persona pone su vida en parte de la vida de otra persona, no hay palabra que puede pagar eso. Ellos dieron su vida ese día para tratar de hacer, asistir a alguien y podía pasar algo malo. Así estamos muy orgullosos de eso y gracias por su acto y gracias por ser oficiales de Golden Beach.
Can you guys, here, you guys. Want to get between Ken and I, want to get between you two. Get closer.
Got anyone?
Yes, I do.
Mayor, as we think, while we have, while we have, uh, the rest of the men and women in blue that serve our community is, you know, these, these acts of courage, because that's exactly what they are, they're acts of courage. When someone puts their lives on the line for someone else, speaks values of the character of the person who works for our community. And this is not the first time that a Golden Beach police officer saves lives. We have saved, at least since I've been the town manager, at least ten lives, whether it be somebody trying to jump off the Williams Island, Williams Island Bridge, leaving, William, Lee, William, Cleveland's Causeway Bridge, um, heart attacks in town or the like. Our men and women continue, uh, receive continuous training to ensure that they're able to provide that and render that aid. And, uh, it's something that we should be very grateful for, that we can, that we instill training on them, that we expect them to be, keep their skills sharp, that they're not, that they're courageous in the acts of when they need to be courageous and that they don't cower it away, there's no cowardice. And so as the manager of this community for the last seventeen years, this month, next month is seventeen years, uh, I am forever proud and grateful for the service that they do. And on a personal note, before I send them all to go have dinner, I personally like to just thank each of them for what they did for me last week. My family and I are forever grateful and I just want to say thank you.
Before you guys go, so everyone knows, can everyone introduce themselves for the council, everyone knows? And how long you been on the force?
Long time.
Sixteen years?
Long time. How many?
Feels like six years.
Feels like six years, huh?
Guys, we appreciate everything that you do.
Mayor, mayor, we have other officers over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Leila Perez, eighteen years.
Yay.
Gio, Giovanni Diaz, uh, fifteen years.
Yeah.
And Rudy thirteen.
Few years?
Oh, and, and Officer Alex Diaz. Six months.
Six days.
Well, that was just crazy.
We'll transfer him to the K. N. I. there. But guys, thank you, we appreciate it. I know I speak for all the council, everything you guys do. I know in this environment, it's a tough job and believe me, we really appreciate the hard work. Chief and Gio, we appreciate everything that you guys do and, uh, it's amazing. You're great leaders and you guys are great, uh, officers and we all appreciate it. Leila, appreciate everything that everyone does and thank you. You guys are leaving? We're just getting started, Eric.
Yes. Get everyone together outside for a picture.
Thank you for coming, family, thank you.
Oh, well, sorry, plain clothes, in plain clothes, in plain clothes.
Oh, yeah.
Ultra Amanda Perez. How many, what? Six months.
Six months.
But you're in plain clothes today. She's doing her undercover work. I forgot they were there.
Thank you.
Eric, get everyone outside for a picture.
You want to join them with the picture?
We do.
How long is Robin? Twenty-six. We're going to be recognizing Robin next month, um, at the council meeting for her, her two years of service.
All right, moving along on the agenda, motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removal of items from consent agenda or changes agenda. I have none, fellow council members?
None.
None, council, uh, staff?
Mayor, we just, uh, on the presentation, we need to off, add Officer Gonzalez's name to the cover sheet, so we'll, we'll update that.
Okay. Nothing there. Good and welfare, the set, anything?
Nothing.
Anyone on the Zoom? No? Good and welfare? Okay, moving to mayor's report. Few little comments, want to welcome everyone, obviously. They all left to the February, uh, meeting, we're in two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, first of all, uh, this past month was a sad month for Golden Beach as we lost several people very close to our hearts. Uh, first, Sedell and Al, Al Herrick. They've been in the town of Golden Beach for thirty years. I remember when I first became a council member, they used to come to every meeting. They've been on several committees over the years and they were the sweetest people. And I, I think, uh, Sedell died first, or he died first and she died a month later. And, uh, they were in their nineties, they lived a, a great life, but they were a, a beautiful, uh, part of the Golden Beach family. Every event that we held, whether it be Valentine's, New Year's Eve, they used to come to all the events. And they were always so positive and a breath of fresh air. So it's, uh, I'm very sad to see, uh, them gone. Also, a longtime, uh, resident Sue Hanowitz passed away. Uh, she's, was, uh, part of the community for probably twenty-five years. She probably sold probably everyone in here at least one house, if not more. But, uh, she'll be missed. Also, uh, Monica Diaz and, uh, uh, which Mo- Monica Diaz's mom, I think her name was, uh, uh, Annabelle, something Annabelle, uh, which is Gio's mother-in-law. Uh, sorry to see her pass away, very sad. And also, uh, our beloved town manager, uh, Martine, uh, Mar-
Marissa.
Mar- Mar- what's it?
Marissa.
Marissa, yeah, I always called her mom. Marissa, yes.
He actually did.
She still owes me money for hiring a son. Anyways, uh, she was always part of the Golden Beach family. She attended many events and, uh, she will be missed too. And Alex, our thoughts and prayers go out to you and your family, so very sad. Oh, and also, uh, Anna, uh, German, who was, uh, also a long term time Golden Beach resident, a neighbor of Ken Bernstein, very sweet, uh, she passed away also. So it was a very sad February and, uh, our thoughts and prayers go out to everyone and they'll all be missed. On a better note, uh, the town manager and I, uh, and our town lobbyist, Dave Caserta, went to Tallahassee, sounds like, almost like a movie. But we went to Tallahassee this month for a few days to meet with Florida legislators to secure a million dollar, uh, grant or a million dollars worth of funding to the wellness, uh, the, the future wellness site work. And I think it was a very productive two days. Uh, we met with many legislators and all of them, as always, you know, promised us that they would really, uh, take care of Golden Beach and appreciates Golden Beach. But a, a special thanks goes out to Senator Jason, uh, Pizzo. He really, uh, works for the town of Golden Beach. He spent a lot of time with the town manager and I and was, he was, uh, brainstorming with us to figure out other ways and other monies we can get. And also when we were there, the, uh, Florida Senate recognized Alex and I, uh, in their, uh, chambers during a meeting. And one of their comments was, they feel that Golden Beach is one of the top five cities in the country to live in. And it was a, a real, uh, nice, uh, uh, recognition for both Alex and the town of Golden Beach. So it was a very productive few days and I want to thank our town lobbyist, Dave Caserta, because he set everything up and, uh, it was a very, very good, very productive. The Valentine's event was very nice. I want to thank the Golden Beach staff, doing a great job. Excuse me. Uh, it wasn't greatly attended, but it was, uh, firmly attended. And the people that were there. This is great and wish more people would come. So I know we do a, a heck of a job notifying our, our residents of these events. We can only do so much. We put in the newsletter, we send out emails, we send out flyers. And if people miss it, you know, it's their prerogative, but it's their loss because these events are really, really enjoyable. And once again, I want to thank the town administration for putting it on and attending and, uh, a great job. I also want to thank. By, uh, thank our town clerk and also Rudy Habello. We've had this past month, several people out and you guys really picked up the slack and, uh, really appreciate it and you guys did a great job and, and, and thank you for everyone for, uh, picking up the slack and everything. So, uh, it's been a crazy month, but, uh, today I walked the town hall again and, uh, it's very frustrating. It's the definition of Groundhog Day. I mean, I walk it every week and today, very disappointing. There were like three people working there, four people working there. And we've got several issues there. It's almost done, but it's not. I mean, uh, we've got the chambers, which is an issue. We're trying to get that completed. There's an issue with the ceiling, I'm going to let the town manager elaborate on it. And also, uh, we got one elevator working. We didn't have the keys, so I couldn't even go up on it, but the second elevator. It's beautiful. When it's all done, because the furniture is in and everyone is moved in and we're working there, we're going to forget how long it took to get it done and what a headache it was. But I, I, I gotta admit, i- it's very, very frustrating. The town manager knows, I'm very frustrated with him, I'm on him every day. He's on the builder. I have caught, met with the builder numerous times, pretty much every week recently. And he looks me in the eye and he promises us stuff and we're not getting it done and it's very, very frustrating. So, but. To everyone that's, you know, doing construction projects and everything's taken longer than expected and, uh, it's very annoying and the town manager is going to give us an update on that. He'll also give us an update on the park and the wellness center. They're also, the new camera system is going up. We got. Adding all the additional cameras. So with that, uh, once again, my thoughts and prayers go out to everyone that we've lost in, uh, Golden Beach. And, uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, other, my fellow council members. With that, first, I'm going to turn it over, you're no longer the vice mayor. Councilman Einstein is the vice mayor, correct? Oh, after the meeting, I take that back. Oh, you're, we got one more day.
His last address.
Last day. So with this, I'll turn it over to the vice mayor, any comments? Now, this is your last day as vice mayor.
We do have a two-minute time limit.
It was amazing being. Been so, so tremendous in this community. Um, you know, I don't want to go through each one, but I just echo the mayor's sentiments and, um, just very sad to sit here and I wasn't even aware of a lot of, um, and especially to, uh, Alex, um, you know, very, very, uh, sorry. Um, but I think, uh, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you, vice mayor. Future vice mayor, Councilman Einstein.
Thank you, thank you very much. Again, um, all these people mentioned, the, the, uh, mayor elaborated, the Herricks, I, we must note, uh, really, I think epitomized, uh, about the good feelings of town. She worked on the election, she smiled, always said, you know, be positive if you're going to run. Nobody wants to hear negativity, you know, about the right thing. Happy couple. Anna German, I didn't know hers was Charlie, but he passed away a little earlier and we're going to miss them too. I mean, you know, it's getting later than we think. And, uh, Sue Hanowitz, I mean, come on. Uh, a lot of people here. Anyway, enough on that. Very sad and of course, town manager, I know how close you worked to your mom and, uh, you honored her every day. And, uh, it was a privilege to, to know her and your relationship and I think it's great. Couple things, the beach, I don't know if anybody saw this this weekend. Kids were in a hole and I, I was, I never realized this. Couple kids, I don't know if they found the hole or whatever. It was like three, four feet deep, they dug it a little deeper. I don't know the full story.
It collapsed on them, the girl was underneath her brother.
Not Golden Beach.
Yeah.
No. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah.
I always see kids digging holes. I always see them burying themselves in the sand, sometimes a little close to the ocean. Or what, you never know when these waves will come. I would like us to be vigilant, I don't know if it's the lifeguards, if it's, however we do it, I don't want to be.
Could be everybody, lifeguards and beach attendants.
You know, however we want to do it. I mean, this was, this was sad. They showed everybody digging and trying to get and it was, the sand is so, weighs so much, you can't get to it quick enough. It's just impossible, so whatever, whatever we can do. In that note, I know our streets, I'm, I fall prey to it. We all think that all of Golden Beach is somewhat of a, a playground and people are going to be respectful on the streets and, and all our kids are there and grandkids and we walk there. I, I don't know if we got, can stress a little bit more for helmets on kids on bicycles and scooters and things like that. Um, I don't know how to do it, uh, I'd just like to s- see a little more of it. Colon rectal cancer, I got screened two weeks ago and just for my thing, I was sixty, I think I was sixty when I got my first one and I was negative, so they said, or fifty-five. And they said, come back when, and they said, come back when you're sixty. I got another one, there was nothing. I came back ten years later, you know, at seventy and they found a couple polyps. Everybody should do it, it's a greatest, easy, it's a nothing test. Go do it.
Lots of fun.
It was a good sleep, uh, the night before.
And you get a great sleep, the propofol is great.
Yeah.
Last but not least, you know, I never, I never realized this and I think I mentioned it to, to Glenn the other day. I said, it hit me, I had maybe ten, fifteen people who don't live in the community who went by town hall and said how magnificent a structure it was. You know, I thought it was nice, but I had other people come by from Bow Harbor and they said, wow, you guys really built, not that it was huge, but they just said it was really a nice. People who live on the Hamptons and across the street who look down on the project. Everybody, never, never was looking for it, but it just kind of hit me and hit me and came back so many times. I went, wow, you know, we got something special here. But, you know, I, I, I understand frustration, I appreciate the work you're doing, uh, with that and that's it.
I, I do want to comment on something Councilman Einstein mentioned. Uh, I just had my first board meeting at the hospital. When I was there, uh, during my orientation, I asked them, what's the number one thing in the emergency room now? Believe it or not, it's scooters, scooter accidents and, uh, motorized scooter accidents. So you bring up a good point with helmets and they said it's out of control, the amount of scooter accidents that come into that hospital.
We had two this month in, on last, just this past weekend, a motorcycle was hit.
So, yeah, so.
You see these people on their scooters.
I don't know what. To, how we can, uh, enforce better safety, maybe education.
They outlawed them and keep this game.
What's that?
The scooters. I think there was a, a.
Yeah, I saw that because the person got hit.
Game. A woman got hit by, on her bike, by a scooter.
But it was an electric bike that hit her.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it was an e-bike that hit the person.
And I thought they just put it, I thought they just put non-use of it for ninety days while they figured it out.
Oh, that's right, you're right.
I think you're right, right. With that, I'll move over to Councilman Mendel.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the mayor and, uh, fellow council member said most of what, uh, I was going to say and what I'm sure we were all going to say. Just wanted to, again, uh, as mentioned, uh, wish the family of, uh, the town manager, you know, our thoughts and prayers. I got to meet, uh, Marissa a few times, actually. A very lovely woman. I did get to meet the very large family that you have, uh, last week, which was actually very nice. Uh, absolutely lovely family. Um, I think your mom was one of.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Wow.
And year one of five.
Ten of eleven.
Year one.
Five of my mom's side, but I'm ten of eleven on both sides.
I mean, I was trying to do the math. I, it's something impressive, honestly. But, uh, just wanted to say, you know, again, uh, our, our thoughts are with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Luskin.
I want to talk a few minutes about the police. I think that we can't thank them enough. In addition to what we witnessed tonight, um, I received a phone call from Monica Mesa, who lives on the ocean, just to let me know that they had a minor emergency and that although it was minor, the police came and really helped them out. Ellen Block called me today and said that her house started to flood. She was panicked, she didn't know what to do. Carlos Valacini, did I say that right?
Valacini, uh-huh.
Came and really helped her out and saved, actually saved a, a huge flood in her house. And I can't thank the police enough, they're always there for us and I'm very appreciative of it. Um, uh, Alex, there's not much I can say because it's heart to heart and we all knew your mother and your family to us and this hit us all very, very hard. Um, I don't know what to say other than it's just words that are from heart to heart, but there's a Hebrew proverb that says, say not in grief she is no more, but live in thankfulness that she was. May your mother's memory be a blessing. That's it.
Thank you. Can I just say something, uh, about my neighbors, Anne and Charlie? Because, um, Anne has been sick for a, a long time and, um- Ann has been sick for a, a long time and um, they were, let me actually start off, they've just been the greatest neighbors. Um, you know, I'm very lucky to be surrounded by beautiful people and those were two of them. And they welcomed me in from around, you know, right when I came into town, they were here, probably ten years longer, fifteen years longer than I was here. And all of a sudden, just taking care of her and the stress from taking care of her and worrying about her, um, he died early and she died soon, soon after and they were just a beautiful couple, they were very much in love and their daughter Brooke is now going to be um, moving into the house or taking on the house, so I, I just wanted to say something, you know, really beautiful about how incredible they were.
Thank you.
Nice people.
Town manager, report please.
Uh, mayor members of the town council, I'll start off my report by just going through some city business. Um, the Valentine's Day event was well attended, um, I was very fortunate to, uh, have been able to attend that event before heading south to see my mom for the last time. Um, and I could tell you that, uh, we like to put on events like that, we'd like to see uh, more participation from our residents at our town events. Uh, we also had an event this past Saturday at the North Park, the police football event, um, although, um, the attendance was very poor, we only had ten residents uh, show up to that event. We're gonna be analyzing whether or not we should continue to provide events that just don't generate enough participation, cause they are costly. So, we'll be providing to the council a list of recommended events that are gonna be scaled down in order to, in order for us to make sure that we maximize our spending powers when it comes to town events. But thank you to those residents who attended the Valentine's Day event. Our Black History Luncheon will be held this Thursday at the uh, Toto Park Pavilion, so if you're available, please join us for our Black History Luncheon uh, this Thursday at noon in the uh, Toto Park area. I'm pleased to announce that we did receive our pension valuation report, next year's pension contribution did not increase, it stayed flat. So we are doing well with our pension, it seems to be working, uh, performing as expected and so we're doing well there. Also, last month, there was a couple of emails or WhatsApp chats about residents or crime in town. Know that there were two incidents last month where a resident, the son of a resident, um, was going in and out of houses, we did make an arrest there. Know that sometimes we don't communicate via the WhatsApp group to try to keep the gossip down, uh, but know that the town, the mayor and I are on top of all the crime. We did have two scooter related incidents in town, both cases were taken to the hospital. Scooter rider, and then last week, um, another vehicle rear-ended, uh, actually this past weekend, uh, a vehicle rear-ended a scooter. So I implore all of the drivers that come through our community to just be aware of their surroundings. Um, I'd like to just take a minute of personal privilege, um, the last couple of days have been extremely difficult for me and my family and I wanna just share a few remarks. My mom was my rock, in fact, I didn't know what to do just now, just took a picture, like I do every council meeting and I texted to my mom during the council meeting, and she would always respond, guewapo or bayo. I just took it, I didn't know who to send it to, so I just kept it, but uh, my mom, oh, I was very proud of the work that I did here in Golden Beach and very thankful for the great friends and bosses that I have. Know that I am forever grateful for the message that the towns, sorry. I am forever grateful for the message that the towns sent to the residents. I'm so sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
It's his family, we were all very.
It's all good.
This couns- this council took a risk on a twenty-seven year old kid who lives a very different life, um, and, and walks on his own beat, and my mom was always so proud that this community accepted me for who I am and accepted our family for who we are. Um, you guys saw her in my office quite frequently, she loved coming to hang out here, she wasn't a distraction, the staff continued the work, but she felt a part of the extended family and this past month, um, as I knew things were getting just a little bit worse, she came to work more often and the mayor got to see her a few times and I could tell you that my mom's happiest days were since when he was able to spend time with me and actually come here and get to say hi to all the staff members. And I'd just like to say that although I was not able to be with my mom, the day that she passed, it was, it was my Golden Beach family who actually were at the hospital holding her hand on my behalf. So for Linda, Lisette, Eric, Rudy, Gio and Hannah who were there, and then for Maria, Lisette and the rest of our staff, Michael and everyone who was there while they, while they kept the town running, I am forever grateful that you guys were there. And so, you have my commitment, as I mentioned in my email to you last week, the only way that I can honor my mom is to become a better city manager, a better brother, a better friend, you have my commitment that although I may need a couple more days to kinda adjust, I will come out of it stronger because I have to honor my mom and respect you guys and the only way that I can show my appreciation to this community and to my five friends on the dais, is that not to fail her, not to fail you, and you have my commitment on that. And I just wanna say thank you for being family and for being a friend.
Well done.
Sorry.
She's smiling.
There's a lot of dust.
She's smiling right now.
Alright, she still owes me money for hiring you.
She does.
Don't worry, we'll still harass you.
Remember, you're, you're lucky that you have these feelings now, cause it means you had a tremendous love that a lot of people don't have.
Moving on, uh, town attorney, report anything?
Uh, nothing.
Ordinance, second reading, there are none, ordinance is first reading, there are none, quasi register resolution, there is one. Item number one, a resolution to town council approving a variance request for the property located at two-one-two Golden Beach Drive covering the first floor elevation, town clerk?
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida authorizing and approving a variance request for the property located at two-one-two Golden Beach Drive, Golden Beach, Florida, three-three-one-six-zero, to permit the first floor finished elevation to be at seven point four-four NAVD eighty-eight instead of the required nine NAVD eighty-eight elevation as stipulated in the code.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
Anyone that's gonna speak on this variance, uh, please stand up and town clerk, can you swear in please?
Does it go in hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, town manager, you wanna go?
Mayor members of council, this, this property at two-one-two Golden Beach Drive is one of the first houses that we're building under our new code of nine NAVD. The surveyor in this particular case used a wrong monument marker to determine the elevation and it built the house at a eight NAVD. Would affect our FEMA rating, because the FEMA elevation is eight, there is no jeopardy to our, our FEMA rating. We have proposed a nine NAVD just to be ahead of the curb, um, but because this house is at eight and not nine, there are two options, have them start the home all over again or grant a variance exempting them from our code. We would never recommend exempting them from the FEMA requirement because that would put the entire community at risk. And so we recommend that you approve this variance allowing this, this home to be built at the, at the eight NAVD as it currently is being built, it's currently about eighty-five percent complete. It, this is a, a good business, uh, decision to do, on behalf of the town, I recommend your favorable approval of this, of this variance request.
I, I got a quick question, town manager, how, how do we prevent that from happening again?
Excellent question, so the surveyors required to submit to us certified, signed and sealed surveys. Their license required that they not have these mistakes, we would have caught this at the very end. At the very end, we would ask for an as-built survey and then there they would take measurements from the seawall, from the surrounding site and confirm. Let me tell you how this one came to light, when the seawall installer was measuring their points. At the right reading, they knew something was instantly wrong there. The town is under no obligation whatsoever to survey any properties or any elevations. We take as a matter of fact, sign and seal surveys for what they are. So the reality is, there are no steps that we could put in place except for ordering our own survey to validate someone's survey. The only time we ask for a re-survey or an independent survey is when two neighbors have conflicting surveys, the town comes in and orders an independent survey and then the way it works is whichever, if our survey says that property A is the correct survey, then property B would pay for that survey and we would accept property A's survey. Um, I, I don't know of any other ways that, that we could.
There is a, there is a stage at which you pour that first foot.
Correct.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, if you wait till the end, it's too late.
Well, no, yes, so I'm not sure why that's.
They submitted the elevation survey.
And it was, and it showed it at what?
At, at the nine NAVD.
Oh, but it wasn't really.
Correct.
Okay.
Because the monument marker that was used caused everything to be red, red one.
Got it.
So the, so the, so the surveyor, air, the air with putting where the monument mark was and everybody used the monument.
He relied on, he relied on the monument marker, monument marker that gave him the wrong reading.
Yeah, but everybody must, the, the contractor must have been using the wrong monuments also.
Yes, of course.
From the beginning because he poured it.
But he would have worked off the survey.
Comes out and he.
They take the elevation, that's where you go for it.
They would have worked off the survey though.
Correct.
The original survey.
So whatever the survey he did, that's how, that monument mark is where everyone works off of.
We require a, a separate survey for the seawall, as you are very aware of that.
Right, right.
And so it was that surveyor who came out and said, there's something wrong with this and then called the house surveyor and said, something isn't working out and they said, oh wait, look at this point, this pointed off, you're off by this point. But mayor, to answer your question, the town relies on certified licensed professionals to submit to us adequate readings. Um, are there one-offs, are there errors that occur? Yes, this is the first time in my seventeen years here that we've seen something like this occur. We have had neighbors dispute surveys and we have had our surveyors come in and, and confirm and make final determination as to which one we will accept, we've done that at least five times since I've been here. But it's typically for where our fence goes, um, by the way.
Roof line.
I, I, I'm saying this, don't panic and don't, don't go to change the code. It's interesting that when you see this property that's one foot below your new, your new code, how high it actually is. And so, um, and so, but when you go to one on South Island, to like Mr. Klinger's house on South Island, that is at the, at the right NAVD and it's almost complete, it actually doesn't look that bad.
Right, but the funny thing is, as you and I both know, cause we toured Klinger's house, when you see where the new elevation is and you look at the neighbors, it's like you're in a different community.
It is.
It's like, it's crazy, I mean, the height thing, uh, we stood at the first step of Klinger's.
And we were still.
And looked down on the neighbors, I'm telling you, it looked like it was ten feet lower.
Yeah.
That's why some residents that are on either side of a new property say they feel like they fell in a hole.
Well, where you see that most is on the dry lots.
I, I get it.
Where you, where you, where you feel that the most and you see it the most, believe it or not, is on the dry lots. On the dry lots and, and we, we've been to a couple of them, um, because of the elevations on Ocean Boulevard versus the elevation on Golden Beach Drive, you can see the vast difference between the two.
In, in my opinion, it makes the retaining wall even more important.
Absolutely, and they're, all retain, by the way, we, all retaining wall, all retaining walls are now required to go in um, before you go beyond foundation, so we are making sure that those are going in, we no longer allow the walls that you have.
They, they fail, it's failing.
Yeah, we don't, we no longer allow those walls.
Go on.
So, so, quick question, so he's, he's, let's say, is seven feet.
He's at eight, eight, eight NAVD.
AP, the next guy, let, let's say Barry Nelson's old house, let's say he builds it nine feet.
Mm-hmm.
And they have a duty to contain their water.
Correct.
It's a little harder now for the guy on the nine foot level.
No, cause the seawall's gonna be the same height.
No, no, no.
Not the seawall.
Uh, rainwater.
Oh, rainwater.
He'll just have a, he'll just have a one foot higher retaining wall.
On his side.
If you go to councilman Luskins, you'll see exactly what the effect is at her home. So when you have a property next to you who's at a higher elevation, on your side, you're gonna be at a lower elevation where you're looking at a, at a wall, at a retaining wall.
We concealed it with a, uh,
Plant, a hedge.
A hedge, but it's, it's sad.
And you'll see that, you'll see that now with the tennis courts, we're putting a retaining wall where the courts are and you'll see that if we hopefully get the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we requested from the state for the retaining walls at the, at the new wellness center site.
Uh, town clerk, roll call, anyone else? Roll call please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice mayor Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, moving on, town project update, uh, town manager, you want to give us?
Yep, and, and I'll try to be brief, but I wanna be detailed, um, as it relates to the civic center project, um, there was a memo that I sent out to the council prior to the last council meeting apologizing for not being able to host this meeting at that location. The civic center project has moved along at a snail's pace, a- as we're getting closer to the delivery. We faced three major obstacles recently, number one is that both of our elevators failed inspection and both elevators needed new motherboards. The second part is that the ceiling that we purchased as part of the Perkins and Will upgrade, it's a hundred thousand dollar ceiling. Um, the, there are few providers that actually will install that ceiling and it will actually apply the acoustical material needed for that ceiling to be applied. Just last week, when they started to apply that material, because of the weight of the material, the screws that were used to hold the ceiling in place were, are not long enough and they're starting to pop out of the ceiling. So we're actually doing some work this week to get those screws a little bit longer to make sure the ceiling, uh, works from an acoustical perspective. So the chambers, all of the chambers, dais is in and the, and the floor is in, we can't move to the next step until the ceiling is actually sprayed. We're hoping that by the end of next week, that ceiling will be complete and that we can install the fabric filter. The next area that we're, that we're, we're having some challenge with is to begin the front of the building. So as you know, we had to wait for Mastech and Tecogas and Hotwire to all move their utilities so we could start the landscape installation, uh, and the planting to be done at the civic center. Most of that work is done, we're harmonizing now the two rural areas, um, and as you can see, as we saw today, some of the plant material has started to go in, the hedge in front of the parking area has gone in and some of the surrounding trees. Um, the mayor is correct, it is beyond frustrating because what's left to be done is, is, they're, they're not significant things that need to be done, but there are things that require a little bit of time and attention from the, from the contractor. Tomorrow at one o'clock, I am meeting, um, as I mentioned to you in my email, I have, I have re-engaged Paul Abbott to assist us with trying to bring some of these projects to a closure, uh, not only this project, but the Toto Park, Park project. Uh, Paul and I will be meeting tomorrow at one o'clock with Sean Compel to see what steps I can take to finish the building ourselves. Um, as it relates to some of these punchless items. So I'm hoping and I expect to be operating out of the building by March fifteenth, that is the expected goal now and that we will have our March council meeting there, uh, without fail and without question, um, but it is frustrating, know that, and the mayor and most, and you all have seen it, uh, since I returned back in January, I've been coming to work at three and four in the morning to try to keep the project moving, to try to keep uh, the contractor to be honest, uh, I did have a setback a few days last week with my mother passing away, but I'm back and know that we will continue to push to get the project moving along. There are some maintenance issues that we're starting to see with the new building, uh, as it relates to the undercarriage of the building that the mayor and I have taken, uh, some steps to make sure that we don't have those issues, a lot of it has to do with the saltwater environment, a lot of, uh, spa, uh, rusting that we're seeing and pitting on some of the underberry. Just today, the mayor and I have agreed and we have instructed the contractor to give us a price to actually carpet the entire building. The echoing that we're seeing now is the building is being delivered and, and we have the hallways that are empty, so we are looking to put, provide carpet in all the hall, hallways, uh, there will be a change order for that, um.
All the offices currently have carpet.
Except for the wall, the, the council has all, the council, so we're, so we're looking to, to make those steps. So, the guardrails, the, the glass railings are here, they've installed the poles for the guard, for the glass railings, uh, the epoxy for the terrace has been applied, we're waiting for the epoxy for the front terrace, um, and all the stucco work is complete. So just today, they finished the stucco work on the of municipal buildings here in northeast, if not all of D County, I just ask our residents to bear with us as a reminder, we own this building, we're not paying rent, there's no emergency for us to get out of this building and the move to the new building will be a, 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 a meticulous process. I will not ask staff to just take everything over there, the mayor and I have made it very clear to our staff, we wanna make sure that we dispose of things that need to be disposed of and that we take only the right things over there. We don't wanna take a bunch of junk from this building into that new building, we want it to be a, a building that is the MVP for us. So the civic center project, uh, that's my update, mayor, we did receive the keys for the first elevator, so now we, we have them, so we can start writing.
I'm taking the stairs.
Uh, so, so am I, sir, um.
Real quick question, do we owe? Real quick question, do we owe the contractor?
Oh, yeah, we have.
A bigger, so why isn't he motivated?
Um, it's a cash flow issue, um, like just today, he had to make another cash payment to the stucco, why they get the stucco to to. Remember, the building, our contractor cries wolf, he believes that he has lost a lot of money on this building. Um, and he is uh, it's a cash flow issue. Um, and we're doing everything that we can to just finish those, again, what's left. The 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 big, the big 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 ticket items are less, the the ceiling of the chambers is a big ticket item, that's left. The second elevator, the motherboard and that corrected, that that's a big ticket item. But the rest of it is just small punchless items, once we get those small punchless items done, um, even even the lobby, the glass is all installed now for the lobby area. So, once we do the epoxy or or this or the concrete on that first floor, um, in terms of big lead items, they're all, they're all in.
I I forgot to ask Lucette when we're walking today, where where are we at with the A V company?
Uh, so A V, the ladder and the A V closet is ready, we cannot begin to install A V in the chambers. When we're doing five spray coats of the ceiling, it would be extremely uh reckless of our part to have them install the A V in the chambers. With all of the spraying that will be occurring, the A V and the rest of the offices, the TVs and the monitors are in. With the exception of the ones in the mayor's office and the manager's office, because of the work, the millwork that was being done in both those offices, we didn't want that to affect that equipment. But we are gonna be installing those relatively soon and as mayor, as you mentioned, all of the furniture is in, the phones are in, the computers, docking stations are all ready. Um, and so we're. A post covid building, all covid buildings have seen significant setbacks, especially as it relates to the cost of materials and getting uh things delivered. As it relates to our uh CCTV project, um, our CCTV project, we finally took delivery last week of all of our poles. All of our poles are here onsite, um, thanks to Chief Robello, Captain Diaz, Lieutenant Perez. Service agreements and we have four of the eight. We have four of the eight on the ocean who have signed their service agreements, um, so we are moving that project along. Uh, Hotwire will be in town uh next week to finalize the path for Ocean Boulevard. And we'll have poles starting to be installed in the ground uh as early as next week for the interior cameras. We are facing a small slight setback with F D O T as it relates to the non-licensed plate plate reader cameras. On Ocean Boulevard and I'll remind the council when the F D O T told me last time I couldn't do it, I just did it. So we we are working on getting those cameras locations up and running, so C C T V is 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 there, um, as well as the access controls. Also, as it relates to access controls, over the next couple of weeks, you'll have to bear with us as you will see gate arms in the opposition. When we see a gate art in the opposition, know that there's either a P S A or police officer who's monitoring that gate. We're in the process of replacing all of our eight, all of our gate arms. The manufacturer for the gate arm company that we have today, no longer manufactures the boards for gate. Position, we are replacing all of the gate arms in town. Reimagine Total Park, so uh reimagine Total Park is well underway, as you know, the elevations are there. Just last week, I s- no, sorry, just two weeks ago, I signed off on the final plan for retaining walls or walls at reimagine Total Park. Hopefully next week, you'll start to see um all the conduit being run, just today. All of the surveys for elevation for reimagine Total Park were completed, um, and those uh projects will be moving along. Paul Abbott and Sean Compel from the Compel Group, and you guys remember Sean from C G T S or from Stan Tech. He's been a part of our team since two thousand and nine, both Paul and Sean have been tasked with making sure that we. Reduce costs and expedite the delivery of reimagine Total Park, the goal is that by the end of June. Um, and by the way, just in the first week, we were able to save a lot of money because instead of having a retaining wall and a. And a and a concrete band for the park, for the asphalt, we co-located them and we're saving money and we're gonna. See that the park is gonna be moving at a more rapid pace, again, tomorrow at one o'clock, I'll meet with both Paul and Sean and we're really excited about reimagine Total Park. Pump station number one is out the bid, I was a little bit discouraged to only have two respondents come to the pre-bid meeting. The bid opening is Thursday at one o'clock, two o'clock, Thursday at two o'clock. As you know, we are responsible for retrofitting pump station number one, we did receive a grant from the state. For the majority of the money as it relates to retrofitting pump station number one, we are on the hook for about three hundred thousand dollars. And as I mentioned in my email to you uh last Wednesday, uh, the town has recently. Been able to collect or negotiate collection of uh close to five hundred and something thousand, I don't have the number in front of me, sorry. Five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in code violations or uh or fines. So we are extremely confident that with those five hundred and thirty or eighty thousand dollars that we'll be collecting. We could cover both, not only the cost of pump station number one retrofit, not only the carpet that we wanna do inside of the wellness center. But some of the wonderful enhance uh enhancements to the building like the councilman Bernstein and others wanna see underneath the building.
Car carpet in the wellness center.
You were putting the carpet in before we build it.
As it relates to our wellness center project, so as you know, we did receive four proposals from the for for the wellness center project, there are four responsible bidders. Your wellness center advisory committee, which is comprised of Ricardo Helfen and Stephanie Helfen, Chris Masiati, Jerry Hollow. And uh Michael Klinger met and narrowed down the submittals to two. There are two wonderful proposals that both looked very upscale and wonderful. However, we do not believe that they can be built for the price that we have, which is a five million dollars on. So the committee authorized me and and with the mayor's blessing, we asked both of those submittals, submitters. To go back and bring to us, not a new building. But that same building at the five million dollars, what would they need to take away from the building? Whether it's lowering an eve or getting rid of a ramp, but bring us what if what we what the committee was afraid of, which is what I'm afraid of. Is that we would select one building and then at the five million dollar number, it would look completely different and not as grand or as great. So both those companies have until March twenty fifth. March twenty fifth to go back, they must bring to us construction. Numbers that they could build that building based on true contractor estimates for the five million dollars that we have. The council will ultimately make the selection as to here's what the choice are. One of those two designs or go out the bid again for new design. Um, and so we're hoping that at your April council meeting, you'll have that decision to be made. Um, the committee felt that was the right step, um, what we still do have alive is the idea of the town designing a building. With the help of some of our uh more qualified residents, that's still not off the table, although we haven't really pursued that. Because we believe that one of the two designs, they're both spectacular, um, and they were, just so you know, cuz you have the packages at home. It was the Nomadis design and the Dempsey design, those are the two that made it to the next to the next stage. So if you go home tonight, look for the Nomadis design or the Dempsey design. And with the council, what I'll have do is tomorrow morning, staff will send you their their proposals, uh, one of them does have a video that you should watch, it's actually very impressive. And mayor, that is your pro- capital projects updates, I do wanna just let the community know that starting this week, in fact, starting this Thursday. The Miami Day Water and Sewer Department will begin to be, will begin upgrading sewer laterals throughout the community. There are over twelve locations where we will be closing the road as they uh make sewer lateral improvements. The South Gate will be closed during these improvements, so use the strand entrance as your me uh may uh way in and way out. Know that these lateral connections that we're working on are part of what's gonna come after June. Which is the full replacement of the gravity sewer line on Golden Beach Drive to a force main. Along Golden Beach Drive and the amount of disruption that we will face in the third quarter of the year is gonna be significant. So you're gonna see, by the way, you will see a lot of patchwork being done, we're not asking them to. We're not asking them to do a full road replacement because we know that come June, the entire street. Now, as you know, I won't accept mediocre patchwork, but we will make sure, but those lateral, those lateral projects are starting as early as this Thursday. And I'm gonna ask all of our residents to bear with us, also, I was uh beside myself at the Valentine's Day event. Uh, the condition of our cheeky huts does not meet the level of Golden Beach and so. Uh, it's not the Indians anymore, but it's a company authorized by the Indians, they'll be coming out to rethatch all of our cheeky huts. Uh, in the next week or two, two to three weeks, excuse me, uh, they'll be coming out to rethatch all the cheeky huts, we are. While at the beach and Councilman Einstein, you should know that we at Golden Beach do keep um shoring at the beach. Shoring is what you need in order if somebody gets uh stuck in the sand, so the sand doesn't continue to collapse on itself, we have our four pieces of shoring that we keep onsite. Um, we do ask our residents not to bury their children or to, you know, the simple one where they cover you above the stand, that's not a big problem, but we try not to allow you to dig holes. But we do have shoring available at our guardhouse because I, sorry, at the lifeguard stand because of it, uh, and mayor, I know that's a lot of report, but that's the report.
Yeah, nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Next items are consent agenda, three items on the consent agenda. Item number one is official minutes of the December twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three special town council meeting. Second is official minutes of the January six. The town council amending an agreement with David Kerserter, Government Relations Inc. Those three items on the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent agenda passes, item number P, town resolution, P five. Excuse me, resolution of town council approving third amendment. Uh, to the agreement with uh Mangai Environmental uh Care Inc. Town clerk, can you read for?
Yes.
Record, please.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving a third amendment to the professional services agreement with Mangai Environmental Care Inc. Providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
It's basically updated uh agreement with Mangai who does all the maintenance and the landscaping in town.
Oh, you have any to add? Yeah, so real quick, mayor, so remember, I I briefed all the council members, so this is our mow and blow agreement, so this is uh it calls for thirty percent over the. You mow it and then you blow it.
Yeah.
Um, it it's a thirty, it's a thirty percent over the course of the next three years, what you're also granting is the mayor and I the authority. To approve and accept unit prices for materials on an annual basis. That's consistent with the neighboring cities, so that we won't pay for materials that are above what the three neighboring cities, Sunny Isles, sorry. Sunny Isles, Adventure, Houndle Beach are paying, so the unit prices we get every year, we will validate those unit prices with the neighboring cities and we will ensure that we're not paying. So is as part of the thirty percent over three years, fifteen, ten and and five, um, that includes all of the work that we did. And and adding the west side of A one eight, the west side of A one eight was a separate P O, we rolled it into this contract. I'd like to thank both Steve Helfman and Kathy O'Leary for helping us with this item, uh, and Steve. I also wanna thank you for reaching out to me the last two weeks and making sure that I've been okay and that that the house has been watched. I'm thankful for that and thank you for being such a good friend, thank you. And so mayor, that's that's that item.
Thank you, uh, with that, uh, uh, roll call, please, and what, any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Einstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, that's all I have, uh, the next council meeting.
Mayor, 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 a couple, a couple, a couple of quick things, so.
It's even done, but go on.
So typically at this meeting, council assignments are done, but because of the realigning of silos that we did this year during the budget process. Council assignments will be brought to you at your March meeting, which is held March twenty six at six P M, as you've already voted on that meeting. So your council assignments will be done at that meeting, also your audit will be done at that meeting, as of tonight's, as at the end of tonight's meeting. Vice Mayor Bernstein is no longer your vice mayor, congratulations, Vice Mayor Einstein, who becomes vice mayor at the end of this meeting. And I just, uh, one last thing for me is just bear with me over the next couple of days and and as I kind of find my new north. And uh and thank you for yours.
One other thing, the league, uh, Councilman Bernstein, Vice Mayor Bernstein was the representative, we need a new representative for the league. So, uh, anyone would like to cover?
You don't wanna do it anymore?
No, Councilman Bernstein was doing it.
Right.
But no, swi- usually switch off.
Someone who preferably is gonna attend the meet league meetings.
I attended all of them.
I know, you did.
I did it once and attended like almost none.
Why why don't you continue then?
Hey Einstein, you wanna do it?
Just so you know, the this is the first year that three of the meetings were within our community. In fact, uh, town manager, uh, Golden Beach, Sunny Isles and town of Adventure, we co-hosted. The last meeting that was in Adventure, so the the meetings have been Miami Shores, has been around here, you've never done it.
But by and large, they're like.
They're down south.
By and large, they're off the coast.
So can you put Vice Mayor?
Can we wait till?
Yeah, you don't have to tell me today, we're the Vice Mayor Einstein down for now.
We'll submit the Vice Mayor, we'll submit the Vice Mayor and the former Vice Mayor is the alternate and then if we switch it, we'll switch it at the next meeting.
Can I? Do you wanna be the alternate?
She did, she needs a drive, she needs a ride everywhere.
She doesn't drive at night.
No, I don't want her to.
No, I don't wanna drive at all, so listen, um, what, I just forgot a couple of things during my council comments, I wanna thank. Um, Nikki Mesa for doing the uh drive there for the diapers and she's picking them up this week, if anyone else. Has diapers, they'll donate, it would be appreciated by the Mesa family, also, um. Ben had mentioned and you had mentioned some new equipment for kids at the beach, which brings me to talk a little bit about the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group because I also know. We wanna get them involved in the ninety-fifth anniversary and it has not been successful the past year. It's been a big turnover of kids, so I'd like Michael Glidden and I to put a big push towards the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group. I think it's important for kids to meet other kids in town and it helps adults and families meet other families. And I think that's gonna help with the attendance of certain things that we're not getting a good attendance on. And it's a different community and I think it's important that we all come together and I imagine when the civic center is done. We'll probably have a big gathering there for people to kind of schmooze and enjoy each other. I'd like to start to, when possible, do a few more bagels on the beach, I just think we need to try to bring the community back together, there's a lot of residents that don't know each other. And I think that's it.
So the next meeting is uh.
March.
March nineteenth.
March twenty six.
But that's your fiftieth birthday, ain't it?
Forty-six birthday.
What is it?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, so are we doing the meeting, can we do?
You already agreed, it was the twenty-six.
What?
You guys already agreed to move to twenty-six.
I did that in my sleep.
We did that like two months ago, we asked for that move. Mayor, I I would like, cuz Councilman just just mentioned it.
It's March twenty-six.
Yeah, I don't have it in my calendar, March twenty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I have it, it wasn't by an invite, but I just changed it.
I did too.
By the way, mayor, members of council, I just wanted, because the mayor and I have agreed and we hope that you will agree. So the grand opening of our wellness of our civic center, the grand opening of civic center will actually be held on Thursday. May twenty-third as part of our uh ninety-fifth year celebrations. So that evening, we're having a big carnival onsite and the wellness center will be, or the civic center, Jesus. The civic center will be officially, that'll be the grand opening, the ribbon cutting ceremony, um, with invited guests from communities from throughout, we will have a qualified. More reputable caterer, do the 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 food, but that is Thursday, May twenty-third, so please save that date. Um, it is the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend, so um, make sure that you have it saved and that you're here, you sign off on it.
So that's the town anniversary.
That's the ninety-fifth anniversary, but also the ribbon cutting for the civic center, what we wanted to do is have co-events, so we reduced the number of events that we had that are costly. So it'll be the ninety-fifth.
What time was that gonna be?
We haven't set the time just yet, Michael.
Evening.
It's an e- early evening, early evening.
Um, real quickly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I went to football on Saturday, just weather was a little effective on that, you know. Police that were there were really trying hard with all the kids that were there. Uh, I thought my little granddaughter, I think she was a little young. You know, the food, just so that you know, I don't know. What the arrangement was with the food truck in terms of what foods did we tell them? Or what did they tell you because they had a very. Something that.
No, no, no.
And I just wanted you to know.
So typically we.
You know what, we don't have to talk about it.
Anything else?
When we've, when we've tried the open menu, the residents get upset cuz it takes too long.
Any a motion to adjourn?
It costs too much money. As long as we're for what we're getting.